That was right on time, too. It's 6:30. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Even my computer knew what time it was. It started to work at 6:30. All right. Is there anyone here for public input? Anyone here for public input? That's separate.
Yep, there'll be another public hearing.
This is just public input, not on property tax valuations. I need your name and address, please.
Yes, I'm Ralph Carr. I live at 100 Wellington Circle in Wake Park, apartment 206. I just remember that back in October, we had received a message from the city that all three city wells had been contaminated with polyfluoroalkyl substances, otherwise known as PFAS, the forever chemicals. And I haven't heard anything about updates on progress made on mitigation or on finding the source of the contamination and what is the current status of the wells. And I'd just like to hear some updates about that.
Okay, and Bill just took off on me. All I can tell you is we're still working on it. We don't have any results yet. And that's about as good as I can tell you right now. We're working with Minnesota Department of Health.
And they're switching wells.
Yeah, we're trying to... Here comes Bill. Bill can tell us this. Bill, can you tell this gentleman how we're doing on our wells with PFAS?
He's looking for more of an update and...
Yeah, just an update on where it's at.
Yeah, we're still collecting data from the state. They're still testing on the wells. The city's in the process of writing an RFP, looking for proposals for hiring an engineer firm to figure out what the best treatment process is of that.
Are the wells operational now?
Yeah, yep, they are, yep.
All three of them?
Yep.
Are they being monitored?
Yes. Monthly, they're being tested by the Minnesota Department of Health.
Okay.
So...
We'll see if... We'll try to do a better job of keeping you updated. We're trying to get some of those updates. How to get the citizens, how to get your email addresses and stuff, and we can update.
There's just not a lot of information to give to you right now. Right?
But you will be informed as we get it.
Correct.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public input?
Sorry, yeah, Pat Thean.
Nope, I need... Come to the microphone, please.
Pat Thean, 934 Willow View Circle here in Wake Park. And I think you said earlier this wasn't going to be about any of the property taxes.
No.
But the letter that came out for the evaluation says this is...
Oh, that's going to come up, but this is not for that.
Okay, so that will be tonight, then?
Yep, in about 10 minutes or less.
Very good.
Anybody else for public input? All right, review and approve council agenda.
Move to approve as... Are we amending it because we're striking item four?
Nah, just...
Okay, as presented.
Second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda items. Item A, approve 81522 city council meeting minutes. Item B, approve 92622 city council meeting minutes. Item C, approve 93022 special city council meeting minutes. Item D, adopt resolution approving Minnesota laws 2021 first special session, Chapter 14, Article 8, Section 20. Item E, approve resolution designating polling places for 2023 elections. Item F, approve 2023 business license renewals as presented. Item G, adopt resolution of support for transportation alternative program application. Item H, adopt resolution sponsoring agency for transportation alternatives program application. Item I, approve final payment of 2021 street improvement and final compensating change order. Item J, approve SEH's 2023 rates. And item K, approve MOA with LES, nonessential employees. LES is a union representing some of the police department.
I'd like to pull D out of there.
D as in dog?
D as in dog.
Somebody else? Or somebody want to move A, B, C, E, F, G, H, I, J, K?
Also move.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Mike?
I just want some clarification on this resolution before we pass it. In here, it's talking about passing both of those half percent sales with just a little line at the end that says something about if voters didn't approve whatever. Wouldn't we want to just strike that 7.5 out of here?
We asked, and the answer to that is no, because the legislation itself referred to both of those questions.
I can touch on it too a little bit. In the resolution, it had to have this exact specific verbiage that was passed by legislature, even if the entire part didn't pass. This is just for the resolution, but moving forward, at the next meeting, you guys will be presented an ordinance on the sales and use tax. That will not have anything regarding the trails. That will strictly be the safety facility. But for the resolution, they said we were required to put the exact language that was approved by legislature.
So this is a state deal again?
Correct.
We have to follow?
Yep, okay. Got your answer, Mike?
I got my answer.
Want to approve it? Move to approve it?
I'll move to approve D.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Regular agenda items. Item A, public hearing, 2023 budget and levy. The Wake Park City Council will hold a public hearing on its budget and on the amount of property taxes it is proposing to collect to pay for the cost of services the city will provide in 2023. The proposed 2023 budget is $11,435,983. The proposed budget represents a 5.3 increase from 2022 to 2023. The proposed 2023 levy is $10,317,620. The proposed levy represents a 14.99 increase from 2022 to 2023. This is a public meeting. The public is invited to speak at this time. And this meeting, public meeting, is open at 6:37. Anyone wishing to speak about the 2023 levy on budget, please use the microphone. Give me your name and address.
My name's Ken. Ken Luvitz. I'm at 1305 Heritage Lane. And my concern is the, what I would call, huge increase in property taxes. If I look at the budget information, the city property taxes are supposed to go up 17.51%. My property taxes are going up 25.6% on a fixed income. This is outrageous. I realize that having a higher value on my home looks good on paper, but it doesn't do a thing for me unless I sell the house. Then what do I do? It almost makes me feel like you're taxing me out of my own home. And I want some kind of much better clarification or justification of why.
Okay, first of all, I agree with you. They're crazy. Mine went up way up over that. Everybody else's did, and not just in Wake Park. And that's... I'm not saying anybody else is at blame. This is Wake Park. But the value of your house probably went up 40,000 to 50,000.
Yeah.
And that is not anything we can do, nothing that we can do about that. That is, the county assessor, by state law, they have to be within 5% of the value of your house. Everybody was bragging a couple of years ago about how, oh, boy, my house, I was going to sell my house for $100 and everybody was offering me 120 bucks. Boy, aren't I a lucky person? And not for us who didn't sell our houses. We're not lucky. All we're doing is getting charged a whole lot more taxes because the values went up.
My city tax went up 60%.
Yeah, and most of them are based on the value of your house. Carla, if the house stayed the same without anything, it was up. It was like a $150,000 house, I think your taxes would have went up $90?
Yes.
Yep, $96.
$96. If, if...
If your value didn't change at all.
If your valuation on a $150,000 house wouldn't have changed, it would have gone up $96. The trouble is that $150,000 house now went up to 200,000.
Well, my 2022 evaluation was estimated market value 156.9.
Yeah.
It's jumped up to 191.2.
Yep, and you're already in the ballgame with everybody else, 40,000 to 60,000 dollar bumps.
So the unfortunate part about the budget process and with taxes is that it's... We all get our evaluations in those, in that amount of time. We get that in November when we get our property tax statements for budgets. And they encourage us to come to these hearings. To change anything on the evaluations, that hearing is in front of the border review, and those usually occur in April. And that's the only time. So this body here, tonight, can't make any changes in that. What happens is the council does act as a border review in April. The county assessors come and staff that and make those recommendations of what those changes are going to be. So any changes that, you know, you feel need to be made to your valuation, I encourage you to call the county assessor's office to make sure. If you've got any documentation that says that it should be otherwise, any property sales in the area that are around your place that are similar, if you've had an appraisal done on your piece of property, those are some documentations that they could use to be able to look at making changes in your valuation. I had the same thing on mine. Mine went up over $70,000.
Why did the homestead exclusion get greatly reduced as well?
That's a state of Minnesota did that. State of Minnesota did that.
It is. There's a cap on it, and still, from what I learned, is the higher that your values go up, the lower in your credit is.
Yeah, you and I are old enough to remember that there was a homestead credit, no matter what, at one time. You and I are now old enough to realize that the state took that away from us.
Yep.
Yes. So to recap, the county assessor, the state mandates the county that it has to be within 5% of the market value. So they're adjusting.
And the problem with this is, this is... They're always about 18 months behind. So this is when houses were overinflated. This isn't today's dollar. This is 12 to 18 months back dollar, when, like you say, all your neighbors were selling their houses for way more than they were worth. Well, what that did to you, who didn't sell your house and want to still live there, all that did is push your valuation up, which ultimately pushes up your taxes.
So all we can do about it is complain again in April at another meeting?
Yeah, and that screwed up because it's a year behind again.
It's a Monday night in April, yes.
But if you have anything, any documentation about what your valuation should be changed, I still encourage you to contact the county now. They can't necessarily change anything today on that, but that's what they can do. And if you get into contact with them now, then you could even find out what it is that they need to do.
Yeah, and then the county would do a review on your property. If you make it known to them that you're disputing the valuation, they'll do some further digging to see how they came up with that value and come prepared at that meeting.
So if houses are selling in this range or higher?
Unfortunately.
Yeah, that's what they're saying.
Yeah, that is exactly it.
And that's the problem.
That's the problem.
That's the problem.
So it happened in my neighborhood as well.
It sure doesn't hurt to complain a little bit anyway to them.
Yep.
With this huge increase, we should take care of the water program problem.
Yep.
We are working on that. We're hoping for a resolution as soon as possible. Anybody else? Public hearing is still open.
Good evening. As I stated earlier, my name is Pat. Yep, Pat Thean, 934 Willow View Circle. And certainly, I just heard everything that was put out with regard to the property taxes. But looking up at the screen up there, it talks about the levy representing a 14.99% increase over last year. And living here for about six years, but I grew up in the St. Cloud area, still have family there. I asked a couple of family members, not their amounts as far as the dollar, but the ones that I talked to, they're looking at like 9%, about 9% to 10%. Looking here, when I look at the city summary for the budget, it looks at property taxes from 2022 to 2023, going up 17.51%. And even looking at your screen up there, you talk about the levy going up 14.99. Okay, for like myself, I am retired. I have a pension. And of course, anybody getting Social Security knows we're getting a big boost next year. Not myself, because I'm not at that age yet. But I do get a federal pension, and so we're like getting about a 9% or a little under 9, 8.7%, which is great. But then, when everything else goes up, like the city, and then I like, I want our city to be better, too. But I don't see, when you look at 17.5%, where we're getting that or the levy increase. Because those are nowhere near, like the 8% or 9%.
The number that reflects our actual budget is the 5.3%. That's what our budget increased from last year to this year. That's what's...
Not the 17.
Not the 17.
Okay.
So the budget itself went up to the 5.3% over last year's, which is less than the 9%.
Yes.
The rest of that comes... So the tax structure is a little bit complicated to explain, and I'm going to look at my finance director if I make sure so there's... You have your tax levy, you have a tax rate, and then you have your budget. The budget is what our costs are to run the city. That cost went up by 5.3%. And the other numbers...
Our costs didn't go up very bad at all. Our revenues were not what they, we were projecting, so that affects that. Charges for services and stuff, we didn't get in the money that we were hoping to get. Or, you know, and then we had some other funds that we didn't get, so that affects that.
Because I believe, too, somewhere I read, it could have been on WJON or in the paper, too, that Wake Park does not get some type of funds.
Local government aid.
Right. So can anybody explain that? Because growing up here, no?
Without sounding like I want to push you off, no, nobody can explain it, because they can't even explain it to us.
Why we don't get it.
It's based on a formula. The city of St. Cloud gets $13 million in local government aid. I think St. Joe gets a little over $1 million. Sock Rabbits gets $2 million, I think, something like that. Sartell gets under $1 million, but still in the hundreds of thousands. We get nothing.
And nobody can explain that?
It has to do with the tax base.
They tell you that because we have the big box stores, we have Shields, Dick's, Home Depot, Menards, Fleet Farm, Kohl's, that we have a tax base. The same people that are telling us that we have this tax base and that we don't deserve local government aid because we have the tax base, the same people are now telling us, don't tax them.
Yep.
So the place to go to that is, next time these legislators and these politicians pound on your doors, ask them why we don't get it. 99% of them won't even, can't even tell you why.
And it's still also a math calculation that they created in 1952?
Yeah, it's very old.
That's part, the biggest part of our problem to get any local government aid.
We are fighting for local government aid. We belong to the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, which is a big sponsor and big promoter of local government aid. And maybe with a little luck, we'll finally get some. We used to get local government aid. We used to get about a quarter million dollars.
Back in 2003, I think so.
Whenever Tim Pelini was in office, on December 29th, he decided that we weren't getting it anymore. So since then, we don't get any.
Okay.
Okay. I always said, what you see in Wake Park, Wake Park taxpayers pay for, there is no really other resources for a city in Wake Park like other cities.
The other thing to keep in mind, and I mean, the tax base of the businesses is nice, but it does place an additional burden on services. For example, we have 23 full-time police officers in a community of 8,800. And a lot of that is because of, you know, our population expands to about 30,000 in the day. And it has a lot to do with that. And so that's the argument that we've made with the legislature. It's... But when you start to make changes to something, I mean, that's where we just need to get them to agree to it. But it's been difficult to do.
Sure, I get it. Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else?
And keep in mind about that half a cent sales tax that you passed, that is helping the city of Wake Park immensely. That is putting 80% of every tax dollar we receive is being paid by somebody outside this community. So thank God we got that, so we can finance a new department.
And we have the ability, yeah.
And we can share that burden with people who come and use our services.
Is there anyone else here for the public hearing on the budget and levy? Anybody got any questions? You got questions? We don't have answers, maybe, but we'll try. If we don't get them, if we don't have them tonight, we'll get them.
I pretty much agree with...
Oh, give me your name, Cap.
Casper Fiddler, 907 Streets South, Wake Park.
Thank you.
I pretty much agree with this gentleman here. I wish that some of you guys could come out there in that area and drive up and down there and along 7th Street and try to get in and out of the driveways there. Now, that is a big pain in the butt sometimes.
Yep.
And I see kids going across that 7th Street South there, and it's a miracle that nobody's been killed. I'm not taking anything away from you guys, because you're doing the best you can. And it just amazes me. There's a lot of them don't have no respect for any property out there. And it gets pretty damn sickening.
What was your address again?
907th Street.
So that's my beef.
Okay. All we can do is do what we've kind of been doing. The police are, especially when school's on, I'm sure they monitor that. They drive by it. We just can't be there all the time, so...
Well, it's a miracle that nobody's been killed out there.
Yep.
And I'm telling, but I don't want to... I hate to say this, but it's going to happen someday. You know, hopefully, it's not one of my grandchildren or, you know, your grandchildren.
And that's just a growing community and the traffic that's out there, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, thanks.
All right, thanks, Cap.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else on the budget or the levy? Going once? Anybody else? Going twice? Anybody else?
Move to close the public hearing at 6:52.
Second.
All right, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing is closed. What do we got to do with that now? Approve the...
Nothing.
No, nothing. That was just a public hearing, yep.
The council will then adopt the actual budget. They'll consider adoption at the meeting on...
The 19th.
The 19th, yes.
All right, item number B, public hearing, unbanked company LLP 2023 currency exchange license renewal. Please take notice that the Wake Park City Council will hold a public hearing on the 5th day of December 2022 at 6:30 PM or soon thereafter to consider the 2023 currency exchange license for unbanked company LLP located at 147 Division Street, Wake Park, Minnesota 56387, pursuant to Minnesota statute 53A.04. Anyone wishing to comment on the license renewal thereof should attend the above stated time and place, date at this 10th day of November 2022. This is a public hearing, and it is open at 6:53. Chief, do you have anything to say about unbanked? Unbanked is over, what's over there now?
Subway.
The old...
Subway, Green Harvest, yeah.
Pearl, Pearl Vision.
Pearl Vision, yeah, there you go. By Pearl Vision, they're a check cashing place, a place to buy money orders and stuff like that.
I checked with Dave and all the police sergeants, and none of them have had an issue with this business.
Okay, yeah, they've been there a long time, and we have not had problems in the past with them, so... If there's anyone here for that public hearing?
Move to close?
Yep.
6:54.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Somebody want to... Oh, somebody want to approve or deny the unbank currency exchange renewal, license renewal?
I'd move to approve the license.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Item C, consideration of police chief's search firms and hiring process.
I know, with our discussion earlier, but I throw out that the Mercer Group Associates would be the group that we should use for the search.
I'll second.
All right, further discussion. Well, all my crowd left. I was going to say, I was going to tell them that my police chief is leaving, so that's why we're not kicking him out. He's leaving on his own free will, so... All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
4-1. Item D, consider police department part-time admin associate.
Mayor, member of the council, I meant to bring this up at the work session and I kind of forgot, as far as the name of the candidate. We are, the police department is asking for approval to move forward with hiring Denise Cantor to be our part-time administration associate in the records area. She comes to us from 15 years with the Stearns County Court Administration. She was an administrator for the, uh, county administrator and did work with the county Board of Commissioners, et cetera. Exceptionally qualified candidate, we think would be... She was number one candidate on our score for our written application. I did send you a summary of the process. And from what she was making at the county, this is a pay grade one position. And she was asking for consideration. And I would recommend that we hire Denise at step one, which is the pay grade for this position.
Pay grade one.
Pay grade one.
Step eight, which would be 24... Better put my glasses on. 2464 an hour.
That's based off of her experience of working in the...
Yes, it's based on her experience and qualifications. And we believe she would be a great addition to our department. She is retired, wants to work part-time.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Yeah, good, we got a good candidate there, it sounds like.
She sounded like a winner.
And then really had what, you only had, ended up interviewing, what, two or three?
We interviewed three. I think we had originally 25 applicants. Couple were eliminated, just were not qualified. We chose to interview 10, but we had several cancel at the last minute. They found other jobs. They had the flu, were on vacation, didn't show up. So, but we were fortunate that our number one candidate did show and did a very nice job, and we're excited to have her.
All right, approve bills.
Move to pay the bills.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Shawna, you got anything?
No, I don't.
I do.
And we're not having a closed meeting either.
Oh, no, sorry.
What do you got, Frank?
I think this is my last meeting of the year, since I missed the 19th.
Oh, okay.
And I wanted to say thank you, Vic, for serving.
Well, thank you.
It's been great working with you, and I'll still be around, so...
Thank you.
So we can chew your butt, right?
Sure.
And I just would like to add that our staff, our employee recognition program on Saturday night was really excellent, too. Thoroughly enjoyed that.
Good.
It was very well received.
Yes. Thanks, Frank.
Yes, it was fun.
All right, anything else? Anybody? We are adjourned at 6:15. Oops, Dave? Bill?
Well, you got some time?
Yep.
No.
No.
Dave?
A half hour? I'm good, I'm good.
I'm good.
Not.
We have somebody in the, in the bleachers. You didn't learn anything here.
Yeah. You got to sit up closer.
Well, thank you for choosing us.
Yeah, right, thanks.
All right, we are adjourned at six fifty-nine.
Seven o'clock.
Um, mine's, oh, yeah, just, see, now they gave me an update.